All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call our Sandy work session to order. Jeff Lee, please call the roll.
Yes, Councilman President. Councilor Smallwood.
Here.
Councilor Sheldon.
Here.
Councilor Walker.
Here.
Councilor Exner.
Here.
Councilor Hutchinson.
You're.
Mayor Pulliam.
Here. Welcome, everyone, to what should be a pretty fun and exciting work session about a deep project we're in the conceptual planning process for over at the Sandy Community Campus, those with the annex. Before we get into that, I'm going to do a quick review of tonight's agenda, in case City Council meeting agenda, in case any council wants to get staff preparing for questions. We will be calling for any proposed changes to tonight's agenda. We'll then get into public comment. Jeff, has anybody given anything online or personally?
No, ma'am.
Will we have any responses to these?
Not as you think.
I think so. And after that, we'll get to our consent agenda, which has our city council meeting minutes for our September eighteenth meeting. Under new business, we'll have our contract award for the operations center expansion design. The purchase authorization for three thirty-five foot Gillig electric buses. And then the purchase authorization for two midsize transit vehicles. With that, we'll get a report from our city manager, and then we'll round off this evening with our committee and council reports. Rochelle, we pleased their conversation going on our concept planning for the community campus annex building renovation.
Yep. All right, thank you. I sure will. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Tonight's topic is going to inform the city council about the status of key developments related to both the feasibility study conducted by Polymath Studio Architecture. And tonight, we have Sean Barnett on the line with us, so he's going to do a little presentation after I tee it up here. And then we're all gonna, we're also going to talk a little bit about the preliminary visioning by the CCS regarding the annex building. So just a quick review, as the council's aware, the community campus has been studied multiple times with varying concepts and cost estimates provided. There have been several developments within the last couple of years, and now we're at this point where what is the next step? And we're answering the question, what happens to the annex building and the front half of the community campus property? So with the demolition in work and the park project construction, which will commence the winter of 2024, the CCS has reconvened with the objective of answering that exact question, what do we do with the front half and what do we do with the annex building? So to assist in the work with this, staff initiated a feasibility study to help envision the future of the annex building and explore the possibility of developing an RFP for a public-private partnership for the front half of the community campus park project. That's a lot of Ps. It's took some practice. In order to take meaningful steps towards visioning of the annex, staff has contracted with Polymath Architects. And again, Sean's on the phone with them. He's the founder and principal. And he's going to provide an update on the work we've done so far and where we're heading. So the CCS meeting focused on the annex visioning. The first meeting, we talked about this was August twenty-fourth, just to kind of give everybody an idea of how new we are in this process. And during that visioning session, we asked several questions of the CCS, things like what are the goals for the annex building? How do you envision that space being accessed? And then those responses were sent to Polymath, which started the planning process. So during the same meeting, there were several visioning key elements that the CCS agreed on. First was to explore the idea of creating a civic center to house administrative offices, council chambers, planning and building, parks and recreation services and programs, and essentially providing more space for staff. The CCS thought it was important to offer space for programming and rooms that could be rented by the public. And the CCS also envisioned the need to improve council chambers with advanced technology and space expansion. So lastly, the CCS wanted to create a hub that would draw people and provide economic development on Pleasant Street, and especially, again, maybe through a public-private partnership. So the CCS and Polymath are using the facility assessment that was conducted in 2020 to help kickstart the use of the space and space needs. And Sean's going to go over some of those numbers, so I won't go over those. I'll let him do that. And then, of course, CCS reflected on financial considerations. And in order to address these financial considerations, the idea was to create a small, medium, and large concept that can be reviewed. And of course, we're early on in the process, so at this point, there's no concepts that we can really sink our teeth in, but those are coming. And another goal is transparency and buy-in. So this includes meeting with staff and other departments, solicit feedback from the CCS regarding the different, you know, small, medium, and large concepts, and incorporating feedback from council, and when the time is right, exploring the option for community input and buy-ins. And then we'll continue to work closely with the CCS and Polymath, and as we progress through this process. And I guess with that, I hope I didn't steal too much of Sean's presentation, but he's going to talk a little bit about where we're at. He's excited to meet you guys, so with that, I'll hand it over to Sean. So.
Welcome, Sean. Sean, you're muted.
Classic. You'd think after three years of using Zoom, I'd have it down. Thank you for the introduction, Rochelle. Thank you for having me. Nice to see some of you folks again. Yeah, so. We had a similar conversation with the CCS last Thursday, and I sort of walked the group through some of the tools we're using to help with the feasibility study. Look at the schedule that we're planning to follow for the development of the feasibility study. And then I'm going to give you guys a little glimpse of some of the things we're thinking about. So let me go ahead and share my screen and talk over some slides. Okay. I believe everyone can see a schedule right now. So we got started in earnest at the beginning of September, really getting to know the building. And so we've familiarized ourselves with the previous reports that have been done on the bunker building itself and the adjacent properties. And then we've made a couple of visits to the site as well to familiarize ourselves with it in person. So that was, that's sort of the first task, was us getting to know the building. Concur with that. To some degree, we start looking into the planning and zoning and building code regulations that will shape the, really, the possibilities of what could be done with the building. That's very much a part of its feasibility analysis, as I'll get into a little bit later, particularly from a planning and zoning standpoint. There's really, there's a lot going on. There's a lot to think about. Design work itself, we started a couple of weeks ago. We actually kicked that off with a tour of the existing City Hall building and the community center. And use that as an opportunity to see what sort of the existing conditions are like at those spaces, and also to chat a little bit with some of the the key users to help identify, you know, what's working with the current space and what might make the next space that much better. So as Rochelle mentioned, we're planning on studying a small, medium, and large version of the renovation. That would, that's likely going to be small, medium, and large in terms of square footage, but also just kind of complexity and likely cost, too. So. Both the CCS staff and the full council will have opportunities to review that at several stages of development. We currently have three waves of design review plans. The first of which would happen starting in about two weeks from now. And so that's sort of this section of the calendar. So for the first wave, we plan to meet with select staff to review things, and then the week following with the CCS. And then we'll incorporate feedback we got through those conversations, refine the design options a bit, and then come back for a second wave, which would include another meeting with staff, another meeting with CCS, and then a meeting with the larger council. And then in the third wave, we would meet a third time with staff, a third time with the CCS. And the CCS would help verify that we've been listening to all the input we've gotten from everyone of the previous staffs. We are going to be doing some cost analysis along with this study to try and help everyone understand what the small, medium, and large options would cost, as that's obviously a critical part of its feasibility. That's going to be based largely on current market data, cost per square foot, kind of parameters and stuff like that. It's likely that if the, if the project appears to be feasible at the end of this study, it's likely that the next scope of work would probably involve some additional consultants, like a full host of engineers and probably professional cost consultants at that time. But right now, it's really just me, my immediate team, the city, and and that's our team for now. At the end of this calendar, in the beginning of January, we'd be issuing a final report that would kind of summarize the steps we took, the inputs we had, the final deliverables, cost projections, that sort of thing. So that will sort of be the big deliverable for this project that will go on record and be used to help you guys make decisions about what to do next. Any questions about anything on the calendar here, on the schedule?
Yeah. I'm kind of unclear, first of all, what? I'm just a little overwhelmed and a little not being very articulate. I apologize. What I don't understand is we just started that, like, this month, basically, and now we're talking about, you know, getting into the holidays, and we're going to finalize all this stuff about what it is we're going to do with this whole area by Christmas. And I'm just trying to understand, first of all, we've done no public engagement, we, you know, I'm going to try to be positive. I want to see us be transparent. I want to see us engage the public. I want to see us engage the council. I don't feel like I'm, I don't even understand, have a good handle on what it is we're trying to do here, who we're trying, what needs we're trying to meet. And I'm a little bit worried that trying to get all this done in the next two months is a little. I just feel like we've been on this rodeo before, and it didn't go so well, and I don't want to screw it up again. You know, because we've done this numerous times, and I just want to take the, you know, go fast to go slow, go slow to go fast, and try to do, you know, take the time that we need to figure things out and make sure that we've got the right architecture firm in place, you know, that we've got a common vision of what we want, and that we've got the right team in place to help deliver that. And then we've got a good public engagement process so that it's transparent.
It's three months. Or probably you said it's not two, it's three months.
Well, Christmas, I mean, you have a whole December holiday, what with the winter, all that stuff is going on, is kind of a wash, I would say.
And I think there's a lot of slides to talk about for what it could be coming up. So before we get into what could be.
Is there a reason why we're trying to scrunch all this into two months?
Say, why not? Give us, you know, if we come up with a good reason why we can't.
Well, I also think it's important to say that this timeline was not articulated to staff or the consultant from the CCS group, right? So all they have been provided is general direction. So a timeline coming back from them and their consultant is more of them expressing what they feel that their capacity is to be able to work on the project more than us telling them how quick to get it done. So when we, and I'm going to go to you, Carl, but when we get through this presentation, if we're still uncomfortable with the work that's being done and the timeline that's being presented, I think we can totally have that discussion. But I just, until we get a better presentation here that's following on kind of what the scope of work is, I think that will get us a better feeling for what we're trying to accomplish and the amount of time that we're trying to accomplish. Carl?
Yeah, I don't want to get too far in because I do know we've got a lot of presentation left here. But one of the things that seemed to be pretty consistent with the advisory committee and myself, particularly, we've been through this rodeo a dozen times already. And I think there's a number of concerns, my concern about the exhaustion of the public, having looked at all the things that we have tried and failed to do. And I think it's, it should be part of the city. They should see it and all that. But I just don't feel like we should go through the whole winding mess of doing it all to the nth degree to be able to show them all the different possibilities. Because I think they've been through that enough that people understand that we're probably headed for a certain direction to try to push that out into the community one more time with all the other things that we've done. I think it's just asking a lot. So that was, not to say that we won't do any of that, but I was one of those who advocated we should go light on the public involvement, which usually creates a lot longer process of looking at it. Normally seeing something where the public involvement is a little lighter than it would be normally done. This is for a brand new strip.
I'm going to go to Chris and then Tyler.
I was just going to say, I have a couple of questions, too, about timeline and engagement, but I prefer to listen to the presentation. And I think that's fair. Let's get to the real quick.
I'll be real quick then. I think the first thing, this was really intended as a gut check, too, right, is the CCS and staff kind of on the right path forward as to what we're going to do with this property. And the second thing I would add is that there is a slight sense, maybe urgency is not the right word, but we are about to demo the existing facilities that are on the front half of that property. We're going to do all this development on the back half of the park. And so that's sort of an eyesore right there in the middle, and we really need to make some plans about what we're going to do with that building. How are we going to build up that entire site? Get it to look beautiful and, you know, coordinating with the park behind it and whatever sort of development action happens on the front half as well. So, you know, it doesn't have to happen tomorrow, but starting to chip away at decision-making and getting us teed up so we can actually implement something there. But as you mentioned, it's been several years, Councilor Walker, and several rodeos that we've been doing this, so hopefully we can get to an end result of the planning and a beginning result of redevelopment would be lovely.
There could be some efficiencies to be gained by the co-timing the construction phases of these things.
So let's continue and see what we're looking at here, and then we can come back to some of these topics.
Okay, sounds good. Let me thank you for the input. I should have perhaps prefaced that this was, this was a suggestion for a schedule, but certainly getting everyone's input on the pace and items on the schedule is important. So, you know, I would be fine to consider this a living document personally, to whatever extent people feel that's appropriate. Okay. This, this report was referenced earlier. This was done in 2018. This looked at building a giant new community center with new pool and everything. It also included chopping the first story off of, or sorry, chopping the second story off of the annex building and putting a parking lot on top of it. The, the big, bigger takeaway is from this study included the recommendation that the first middle school building and the pool building be demolished, that they were not worth saving, but the annex building was for a number of reasons that were elaborated in the report. I mean, it is, it is, it has a lot of deferred maintenance stuff, but the bones of the building are considered to be good. Then this report was also referenced earlier, the facilities assessment report. And we have been using this as our starting point for the building program. And in architectural parlance, the building program refers to both the types of spaces that are in a building, their sizes, but also their relationships together, and how each of the different spaces function to create a whole building. So this report at the time, well, I suppose currently, anyway, currently still, City Hall has a current size of seventy-six hundred square feet. It was projected that in ten years it would be appropriate to grow it to a little over nine thousand square feet. And then the community center, which is currently about eighty-six hundred square feet, was projected to need to grow to fifteen thousand square feet to meet the needs of the community and city. So we have been taking this tenure projection as sort of our baseline of what we would need to fit into the building to determine its feasibility from the standpoint of, is there enough?
On that fifteen thousand, does that include, like, community, you know, any fitness equipment, any gym space, any big, you know, work exercise rooms and things like that that we don't have now?
I don't know that the report talked about that in too much detail, but that is absolutely some, something that I would like to learn from whoever is giving any input. We want to know if those types of things should be included in the fifteen thousand square foot allotment or not. So.
Very important to your question. I mean, it should be determined, but I think we should, we should try to figure that out, you know, based on conversations.
But I will say, adopt or in our city, and if we're going to use processes and lean back on previous work that's been done in reports, the facilities report is a document that has been vetted and adopted in our city.
It's a good starting spot for wherever we go. Doesn't mean we're going to end with that, right? We've got to start somewhere.
Yeah. And so the next step we did with those numbers is we looked at, okay, they moved from seventy-six hundred to nine thousand, it was an increase of about nineteen or twenty percent. So we looked at some of the key rooms in the City Hall space and scaled them up appropriately to help us at least have a starting point, for example, of how big community development office should be. And then we did the same maneuver with the community center. In that case, the tenure recommendation was that it get about seventy-five percent bigger. So we did the same thing. We scaled all of the numbers up by seventy-five percent to give us our initial targets. Now, again, whether or not these are the ultimate targets we try to pursue, I guess that's not quite known yet at this time. The next step we do is we take all of those numbers and we draw to scale colored boxes of the different, the different items on the list. So loosely speaking, the community center stuff here is in orange. So we have things like a dining area, an auditorium, an arts and craft room, and a game room, et cetera. City Hall stuff in blue with city administration, community development. And then you can see the dash lines and the gray lines start to look at how these spaces operate together. For example, there's a lobby in the middle. That's a kind of easy one. Most spaces probably want to be accessed through the lobby. And so we, this is a tool we use to determine the adjacencies and interrelationships of the program. So this is very much something that we'll get, hopefully, a lot of good feedback for the interested parties of the city, both staff and then members of the CCS and council as well. So I guess just to round out this, what this is starting to look like is an architectural floor plan. And Rochelle alluded to the fact that we have been drawing floor plans. We don't have anything quite ready to show you yet at this meeting. But we'll have these same colored boxes basically laid over the floor plan, and they'll need to bush, and, you know, they won't all get to exactly the right size, but it's sort of a way to test how it all fits in a test fit plan. And then along with the floor plan drawings, we're going to start doing 3D rendering work as well. They're kind of tied together in our process nowadays. So not only will we get to see how the potential spaces can lay out in the building, but we'll also be able to give you a sense of what the building could look like. And that's, that's really an interesting question, because we are familiar with the Sandy style, and I'm sure everyone here in the room knows that the bunker building doesn't really look much of anything like the Sandy style, so that's reconciling those two things is an interesting part of the process. Another.
A minute. I thought those were just bubble charts. Are those actually part of the building before, the screen before?
These are just, these are, these represent the key spaces in different parts of the building. They're sort of abstracted rooms.
Not necessarily where they would be or floors, just to give you a layer, kind of a visual, what's bigger, smaller.
Okay, thank you.
I guess the same question.
Yeah, sorry, I guess that's, that's kind of a, it's a very architect-y kind of thing, so bear with me. Sometimes, sometimes we take those things for granted. Okay, so there's a lot of interesting stuff going on at the site level that's going to help determine whether the project as a whole is feasibility or not, is feasible or not. So the bunker building here is highlighted in red. The other two buildings are circled in red, but empty on the inside. And then the property itself is bounded by this yellow line. So a few interesting things here. The, each of the buildings all share a common property, which is unusual, I would say, for buildings of this size. I'm sorry, does someone have something to say that I hear you say?
No, we interrupt you a lot, Sean, just not this time. Sorry.
No, 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 that's fine. It can just be a little hard to tell on Zoom.
That was a little bit of feedback. Sorry about that, Sean.
Oh, no worries. Okay, some other interesting and really relevant things. So it's all one big property, which is, there are going to have to be some decisions made about, particularly the front half of the site and the public-private partnership. You know, does it make sense to divide the lot into smaller lots or try to develop them all in one common lot still? The lot happens to be in a residentially zoned currently, which is a little bit awkward, because the residential zone doesn't support the kinds of buildings that were put in there. The building's currently operating under a conditional use permit, and so that would be one way to do it. It would be to get a new conditional use permit to allow the new and improved annex, City Hall Civic Center, to exist on the site. Another potential option could be to rezone it. We would like to have a discussion shortly after this meeting with planning staff, the planning department, to sort of get their take on on those sorts of things. Another really important factor is that from Pleasant Street here to the front door of the bunker building, which is on the second level of the building, there's about twenty-five feet of grade change. So, which is a lot, I mean, two and a half stories. So that's really going to affect the site planning of how it all lays out together. The bunker building's going to need a parking lot, presumably. It's going to want to be right next to the building. So presumably, there'd be a pretty flat area in front of the building, which means we're making up a lot of grade change from Pleasant to that parking lot in kind of a short amount of space. So it'll be a really kind of dynamic site with some elevation change on it.
Are you, are you, I'm not sure, are you supposed to be on the next slide with elevation?
I can go to it. This diagram was pretty helpful on Thursday, so Pleasant Street up here on the left. And then we have, I have a plan to go along with this. We think this would be the area that makes sense to locate the parking lot, which would leave this future development area here with two stories of grade change over the course of it. I know that designing those isn't really, you know, my scope of work or the intent of the feasibility study, but there's going to be a good amount of sort of earthwork and civil engineering kind of stuff that will need to be done to support the bunker building, it seems, in terms of new roads and navigating that height difference. So here was sort of our first thought on how the site could lay out. I mentioned the parking lot. And then this would be the future development here. And this shows the pedestrian, a pretty big pedestrian move that would lead you right to the front of the building. It came up on Thursday that there have been a lot of talks about that pedestrian way sort of being neutral on the west side of the site. So, you know, that's a potential option, too. But in terms of the bigger picture moves of getting people, you know, from Pleasant Street down to the building, that, that problem is pretty similar, sort of regardless of, you know, where some of those things lay out. Another funny complication is this property right here. This is currently a right-of-way. It's an extension of the street. It appears that this homeowner's been using it as a driveway for a long time. So decisions will be made, have to be made about what to do with that. And then how does it all connect to the new park that's getting built? You know, does there want to be a connection to the park here or on this side or potentially both? You know, that's, that's important to think about as well. That is the end of my slideshow. Again, I covered a lot there. If anyone would like to go back and look at something or ask questions or give feedback, I'll welcome it now.
I don't know if it's Sean or Rochelle, but could one of you try to kind of go in? kind of go into the discussion we did have on community engagement a little bit the other day, when we thought would be the right time for some of that?
Yeah, um, let me, if memory serves, I think one of the things that we talked about is once we had a preferred concept that we would, um, revisit that conversation of how to enlist the community for buy-in. And whether it be, and I guess, you know, driven by the CCS, do, is it another survey? We did talk about Sean, um, had mentioned having an open house where we can engage folks that come in in person. And that sounded just again, very, very preliminary. That sounded like that was something that the CCS really supported. Um, and so there's, there's a bunch of different varieties, but once we have this preferred concept and, and, um, the council and the CCS has bought in on it and, and sort of, we can.
I'm sure there's questions. I think just the overall idea on where we're going with this is, um, instead of getting too much into like what programs are going into the building and in what rooms, it was really leaning in on what our facility needs, um, as a community. Um, what makes the most sense matched up with our facility needs as well as our kind of overall vision and concept of what we want to see, that how we want to see the community engaging with those, um, parcels. Um, and I, I do think it needs to be said, it's been brought up how much we've kind of had a co- community, ongoing community conversation about, um, this property over the many years. Through that, there has been community engagement. I think we need to also realize that we can lean back on and we do have, um, investments and assets that don't need to just be, um, completely put to the side. Uh, but I also think, you know, once we're able to say we're, we're moving, you know, kind of civic administration as well as recreation, we can then start really engaging, exploring into what kinds of recreation we need. Uh, but we do know what our facility needs are, um, already as a community, uh, and this project helps address a lot of those. Yeah.
I just can go a step further and say our exploration down this path is very much founded by that study and the physical space in the bunker building or the city building. And to look at from a cost perspective, what could we do there? Because we are out of space. I mean, I think that's one thing we have to recognize. We are out of space from a city perspective. We do not have a plan right now to go forward. So we have to do something in the short order and we do have that opportunity and that building, but since I think we would be doing it this service, not at least exploring what we could do, uh, within the means that we currently have available to us, including urban renewal.
But I, I do think, and, and this is not to speak for council, this is what we're weighing in on, but CCS, I think, has had kind of the conversation that we're not looking to drive for some sort of bond. Um, that's not what this is. This is a project that we're trying to work within the current financial constraints and structure that we have here as a, as a city urban renovation.
Can I postpone that?
Yeah.
So I, I, cause I'm not with you and not upon, I don't want to hit a bond against our general revenue. Urban renewal could bond it.
Oh, no, no, I don't mean bonded. I'm sorry. I mean, like a, a, like a ballot, a ballot.
Okay, all right.
I apologize. Yeah, like a levy. Yeah, council.
So over the years, you know, we've had the OpSIS plan originally, and then we kind of relooked at it, focused on the pool and ended up with that OpSIS version two. And now I, are we going, you know, I have several questions and one of them I will get to is just kind of how did we end up with this firm? And are they going to be doing the whole thing? I mean, is that, it, it sounds, because changing horses with firms, we already know, doesn't work out well. Uh, when you have a, a preliminary plan done by one firm and then you give it to another firm, it just doesn't go well. So I'm confused about all that, but I'll save that for later. Um, the thing that's tortured me and I swear to God, it's torture you guys, because I'm a planner and I'm a recreation, you know, planner. And what's been hard and what I've been saying all, all over and over again is, you know, this is a three, this was a three-legged stool. We had the community center, we had the park and we had the pool. And we kept focusing in on just the, the pool. And I kept saying, it's three legs. We gotta do the whole thing. And, and now we're, you know, we got the, we, we, we didn't go that way. We went with the park and we got that really well done. And now we're kind of going back and, and we've kind of jet, jettisoned the pool. And so now, but now we're looking at like trying to kind of make it a civic center, you know, basically, basically make it for staff space. And so from where I'm coming from, I'm here for the community. And what I've heard from the community is they want, you know, community center space. They want gym. I have riches on the line. He can, you know, his kids play, my kids are past that, but you know, indoor play space, community, uh, basketball courts for the kids to be able to play. Uh, fitness, you know, some fitness equipment. Doesn't have to be anything as big as the health club or anything like that. But all these other community centers I see around here have space for all those things. So I want to make sure that we are trying to make this a community center that will meet the needs for the future in Sandy. And if we can also do that and get some, you know, s- staff space here, you know, build on a third story, whatever it takes to try to make that all happen and meet our s- space and staff needs, that's great. Let's do it all at once and all in one location. That makes sense. But for, for me, my first priority is the community center and making sure that we've got all the amenities. And that's why I kind of just, you know, this was something I had done a long time ago that just kind of talked about in, I apologize, Sean, I brought this to me. But just, you know, it's just the average square space that people use to come up with like how big is a gymnasium? How big is, you know, fitness cardio areas in a community center? How about a group exercise rooms? Multipurpose rooms with, you know, kitchen, senior lounge, teen area, party rooms that you can rent out and things like that. All the things that I think you guys are talking about. I don't know. I haven't been at meetings, so that's what's hard for me. But I, I do, my focus is making sure that this is a community center for the community. And if we can get staff space, uh, added into it to meet that, great. But I'm not, you know, that, that's where I'm at. I, I hope we could do a win-win here.
I got some comments. One quick, I want to go to Sean. He's had his hand up for a little bit and I'm going to press. Yeah, Sean.
Oh, thanks. I wanted to, um, this was back on the, the public engagement, um, topic, but, uh, something we talked about on Thursday, which I think would be valuable to, um, bring up again here. Um, sort of two, two things that, um, resonated to some degree. One, if, if, if you look at the, the overall architectural development of this project, you know, from, you know, two weeks ago to construction and permit drawings and bid drawings and you have your contractor and you're ready to break ground. The, the study we're doing here to, over the next several months is a really small part of that overall process. It's the first mile or two of a marathon, really. In other public work I've done, um, I left this out of my intro. We did a couple of larger renovation expansion projects, uh, for the city of Lake Oswego over the past few years. And in each one of those, what we did was we, we started by doing some design work. We took it to a little bit different milestone than is proposed here. Um, but then we had a series of open houses where we shared that design work with, with the community. Um, and we found that giving something, giving people something to react to can, um, oftentimes be, um, it, it can be easier for people to provide feedback in that scenario, um, rather than, um, we're just asking, what do you want your community center to be like? That's a hard question for most people to answer. Um, but if we show them, hey, we've, we've talked with a lot of people that really care about this project. We think this is a pretty good idea for a community center. What do you think about it? That can often be an easier way to get feedback. So anyway, not necessarily my call to decide how the public engagement works, but that's, that's sort of some background on what I had discussed with the CCS a little bit ago. And also to you, to your point of, uh, making sure that it's a good enough community, community center, I'm kind of paraphrasing what you said. So sorry about that. Um, uh, I should have noted when I was looking at those square footages or showing those to you, that even at the 10-year projections, they only add up to twenty five thousand square feet, which happens to be about the size of the bunker building now. So, um, you know, if the outcome of that, that report was that the, the community center needs to be fifteen thousand square feet, it appears as though we have space to do that. And that's before even adding a potential third floor. So I, I think that especially if a third floor is added, I think there's going to be a ton of space to work with. Um, and I, I can't imagine there wouldn't be enough space to, to fit every community center wishlist item that there was. If, if the group as a whole determined that was appropriate.
Basketball does take up some space. Press.
I stole my thunder. I was going to say, maybe we're putting the cart before the horse because if we're thinking about the high picture conception here, what they're going to give us in a, in a, in a month about the feasibility study. And I, I, I love this chart, Kathleen, thank you for sharing it. But think about this. A four hundred meter track is like fifteen thousand square feet. A four hundred meter track, you can put four volleyball courts, two basketball courts and a, and a floor hockey court inside it. Then use it multi-use on the ground floor of what we have today.
The track goes around the.
I'm talking about indoor track. It's fifteen thousand square feet.
It, it, it doesn't take its own spot. It's on the side of the wall and it's just a, a.
But I'm just giving you a concept. It's fifteen thousand square feet for a four hundred meter, a four hundred meter track that's five lanes wide. That would be the outside of a, of a base. If that's what you were doing, you could put all that stuff on the inside. If you have a, the, to your chart, you're twenty five thousand square feet of space. You have plenty of room to build whenever we want in there from a community center to indoor sports, to activities, to anything our community has been asking me for as well. So I support what you're saying. I just don't think we have to worry about part and parcel, what goes in there right now. We're just more talking about, are we looking at, okay with building a building in that space, given the configuration that we have. And that's what I think this group is trying to give us. They're not asking us, what are we going to put there tomorrow? It's, hey, let's look at the big picture space and is this look like the direction we're wanting to go?
I, I think to answer that, I think it's, tell me if I'm wrong, Don, Carl, but I think as far as we've gotten into programming, it's saying we want programming. I, 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 I mean, that really is the extent and end of the weeds we've got.
There are some constraints. All right. I mean, I don't think you're going to turn indoor track inside of the bunker building. You're not going to put basketball courts inside. So Kathleen mentioned, you know, and, and I get the passion that we're, we're here about the community center and things, but fundamentally, the reason we didn't go for the, the OpSIS community center is we couldn't afford it. And so even before the what, we have to make sure it's financially viable. Right. And that's what this exercise is to see if there's anything that can be done with, with the bunker building that, that is financially viable that gets us further down the road towards our goal.
And, and I, you know, and we've had conversations about being here for the community. We're all here for the community. But I also, you know, I think in a lot of ways, I've, in, in the last five years had to become, I, I, I joke about this. You can't, and the mayor that says you can't always get what you want. But I, you can't, you do get what you need. And our, our, our community needs more facilities for our staff. Uh, anyone who walks through a city hall and realizes that on a single person on our staff has their own office space, that there's one conference room that they're meeting in, that they're having confer, they're having their conference meetings here in our council chambers. There's one bathroom that everybody's sharing. That's just one example for all of our facilities. So there are needs just to function as a city government that we need to do. That's not always fun. And it's a big reason why we found ourselves with infrastructure where we have as this community, because we like to do fun projects for our community instead of necessarily the ones that we need to do for our community.
Uh, just sure, just add on that. You and I were talking at the, uh, the staff recognition about the, the impact the new high school have on teaching and the quality of teachers. Trying to get a teacher to come work at the old high school where they didn't even have a dedicated classroom and it was the, the office was a storage shed or whatever. It's really tough. You give people a nice, uh, new high school, all of a sudden you see over time the quality of teaching go up, the ability to hire and retain staff. We have wonderful staff. If we get overcrowded, that's going to be really hard to keep. So to me, that is a priority. It doesn't feel to, to Joe Citizen, that may not seem like the top priority, but when the quality of staff goes down here, they'll care.
Saw Carl.
Yeah, I guess, um, where I'm at right now is that I'm trying to stay big picture with the kind of planning we're at and ready to have that received from contractors. The other thing that I see is that we have been through three and maybe even four different community efforts to find a way it to put, and I agree that, uh, McCathleen's talking about the, the three-legged stool. The, the problem lies is that the pool has just become one of those things. It's been a, it's just tough for me to say it, but this, this isn't one of the things we can afford. So our analysis with the community, our analysis with the way we need for the different kinds of categories of buildings is that I think we know a lot about what we would like to get, what we need to get. And I would look forward to seeing this contractor say those, pick those other pieces and parts that we have already gone through with several iterations of the public, several iterations of councils over the years. And say, okay, here's the best combination of that. And then they have a low, medium and high, um, presentation and planning on putting together. And we talked about what that might be. I certainly hope that the entire council gets involved in that. Certainly hope that the public, when they see these kinds of things, get involved with it. And again, there's a certain amount of stuff that we've already done. Let's use that. Scratch zero and start forward. That's important, I think.
So what I recall is that the, um, facilities maintenance plan, which I remember testifying here saying, you guys need to do a facility maintenance plan. Uh, you know, future, where, where are you going to, what are you growing into and be a little more proactive? But all they did was they took that and added seventy five percent to what you had. And that's kind of what, you know, they took those numbers, what he just showed on this chart and added seventy five percent. So that's how they came up with those numbers. There was in the OpSIS plan, forget the pool, I, I understand that, but in the OpSIS plan for the community center, we did have space needs identified when we, that we were talking about with our community campus community. We had some identified space needs, including a gym. I don't, you know, I'm not sure why we are kind of looking at those. Cause I get, you know, the, the thing that threw out the, a lot of it was, was the, uh, the pool is what, you know, with the Olympic, the Olympic sized pool, whatever and all the, everything else. The pool was kind of the big cost center, but focusing on a community center is I think where we need, you know, I don't, I don't agree that our public's going to tell us, yes, your staff needs more space. I think, I'm going to finish. I think that, you know, these days, what we've heard Kelly say is a lot of people want to work from home. And so I'm not sure we need as much staff space as this original facility, pre-COVID thing, uh, not this, but the, the facility master plan. It, you know, I think it's something that we need to kind of be looking at. How much do we need? I just want to make sure that we are looking at what our needs are for, for the community center. What are, what are the kind of things that we want to have going forward for the next 20 years? And I don't want to spend all the money we have on just making, you know, sort of like billing the church for Easter Sunday when, when we don't need something that big for the staff and for the city council.
Can you clarify what you mean by gym? Do you mean basketball gym or weight room gym?
I mean, you know, I mean some.
Makes a difference in this.
I mean, some, some fitness equipment. I mean, I look at like, there's a Canby one there. So I was looking at the Hillsborough one. They have some workout equipment. They have a basketball, they have a gym for kids to have.
This is why it matters.
Yeah.
Because we have a two-story building with one-story floors. And if we've, even if we can afford, which we may not be able to, that third level, it'll still be one story. So if we throw a basketball or something that requires more height, it's a completely different animal and it's no way it's going to come in anywhere near the budgets we have.
Well, I mean, I'm going to just throw out, you know, having having the option of, you know, building on to the side of that to create a gym. That's why it's like, what are our, what are, what are our goals here? And, you know, what do we need? And if we do this and we spend all the money we have on doing this, we will never have a gym.
I'm not quite sure it's overall in the roles of a city that have to provide.
Lori's getting ready to, she's getting ready to weigh in.
Well.
Especially, especially when we have major infrastructure issues. This is trying to just take care of the items that are right in front of us that we have to.
Well, I, I look at all the, you know, look at Canby. I was, you know, I, I've been looking, I did a lot of research on all these community centers and most of them have a gym where they do, you know, the kid stuff. I mean, Rich should weigh in here. He's got kids.
But we're, we're, we're really in the weeds here. This meeting is not, but this meeting is not to go through what goes into every single room as much as are we wanting to start the process of looking at a community center? And then we can start the discussion as to whether, what goes in it. Uh, but we're just, we're not, we're, we're all, we're putting the cart way ahead of the horse here, I worry. Um, Lori.
Yeah, a couple of quick things. Uh, exactly what you said. One is we're, we're way.
Yeah, a couple of quick things. Uh, exactly what you said. One is, we're, we're way getting out of the scope of of what we're supposed to be talking here tonight. Number one. Number two is, let's not compare a city of thirteen thousand to a city of twenty-five. And then lastly, you know, we're gonna be looking down the road to a Parks and Recs district or something along those lines. And when you start talking about basketball courts and things like that, I think that needs to go into that type of development. Otherwise, to me, it sounds like we need to be looking for a YMCA or somebody to partner with and move forward. But I I agree with Stan. I don't believe some of this stuff is on the city to provide, but let's, let's try and stay focused on what we're here tonight to address.
All right. I I mean, so Rochelle, can you kind of take us through what the next steps are um, in this exploration?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
We can go back to the schedule.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
And Sean, um, jump in if I miss any of this, but so what he's um, next steps will be to um, continue to work on the small, medium, and large concepts. CCS will um, see those concepts and talk about and provide feedback and using the information that Sean, and he does have the the previous OPSIS plan and the facility assessment, and then CCS will get to provide comments. And um, depending on the direction of the CCS, we could bring it in front of the council. That's something that I would have to um, lean on the CCS for when it comes back to the council. And then we would continue to refine those three concepts with a preferred concept at the end um, that we could do the public engagement piece. And Sean, did I, what, do you wanna chime in and add anything to that and?
Rochelle, can you provide us?
You know, I think, oh, sorry. Go ahead, Sean.
No, go ahead, Sean.
Okay. Uh, I don't really have, uh, no idea. I think you said it pretty well, Rochelle. Um, I don't necessarily have anything to add, other than, I mean, it might be worth showing the community all three versions of the the small, medium, and large, but that's.
And then what, what happens to this building?
Well, we're.
Yeah.
We don't have to answer all these questions yet. I, and we don't have, we don't have that answer. So what would happen to this building? How, to Kathleen's earlier question, can you give us a quick background on how we found our consultant and how you view our?
Process.
Our process.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, so the consultant actually um, doing some reference checks and having heard that they did some um, pretty outstanding um, tenant improvements and uh, renovations. Visited some of the facilities that they had provided, um, the drawings for that, the public engagement piece, engaging council, and then contracted with them for twenty-two thousand dollars for the feasibility study based on um, feedback from the CCS. The next portion of it is um, like we've always done following the public process, where if the council wishes to move the preferred concept forward, there's going to be a refinement of the concepts. That's gonna take it to a certain level of construction drawings. That will give us a better example of what the costs would actually be. So we would hone those numbers in. And then um, if at the, you know, the will of the council, you wanna move forward with the renovation of the bunker building or the annex, then it would go out for an invitation to bid and solicit contractors to come in and um, build or renovate the project. And in the meantime, we'd had, we'd go through the same process to um, pick an architect that would be the owner's representative through the construction portion of that. So by no means is um, polymath a, you know, they've, they've got their work cut out for them and and uh, Sean knows that, so.
Thank you.
Can I add something? I would, I would certainly love to be the architect for the whole entire project. It is common that, and I, and I think this would likely be the case here, the project is gonna be big, um, and the ultimate cost of design fees are typically high enough that it has to be competitively bid. I I don't, I don't know for sure that that would be the case here, but that is most common, that um, you know, there would be some amount of um, RFP in terms of finalizing the designing team, but um, a little bit above my pay grade, I guess, to thank to tell you guys how to hire your consultants. That's just typically what I see.
Chris has been trying to get in here.
Yeah. Sorry, I I did, this might sound like off cuff, but to go with what Counselor Smallwood said at the end, I think she might have been joking a little bit, but I brought this up last week about public-private partnership.
Yeah.
And amongst of what the city thinks they can do with that property, I would love to know what the interest is from private businesses who wanna come to Sandy to build a gymnasium on that property in that area. Because that would be what we're, what the city wants, but we can't afford. And so when she said, we might as well just let YMCA come in and do it, and I'm just using them, because you said that, I would love to see a gym come and bid. What we could do for that property if they were gonna build the building there, and it wouldn't cost us, and then we'd have a private public partnership for that area. But I'm just.
To me, that's my interest. To me, that's part of the third, that's part of the third leg of the revised tool. Right, is, it's embedded when we get into that public-private kind of RFP conversation, is just what are the kinds of things as council, which we wanna see there? Gymnasium may be, very well may be one of those things.
And I would, I would just, and I know we don't, we can't do the RFP if there's interest in there, but I'm sure that we have, they have contacts in the area that we could talk to see if there is any interest in people wanting to build in Sandy or come to Sandy to see if it's even a relevant topic to bring up. I, I'm nervous about it because of the financials we already saw based off our last two studies. It it would suggest that it's not a financially feasible prospect.
For private business?
That would be my. I'm not in that business, I don't know.
Yeah. So um, is is the thing that you've got on your staff report? In in this proposal, a community center? Is that in there? I I'm confused.
What do you mean by that?
Well, I don't wanna get into the weeds.
No, no, but I mean, you could. Open space or or?
Okay, what I'm seeing is I, you know, I'm seeing parks and recreation facilities, various meeting rooms, programming spaces for youth and the arts, multipurpose rooms for flexibility and more. So the the community center that most other communities we have, we have in this, if, you know, around us, regardless of size, I mean, the other bigger communities have multiple centers and all. Or is this what we're, are we trying to build a community center here to serve Sandy for the next twenty years? That's my question. Is that?
Can I take that? So keep in mind, the study that we're basing this on only goes out five more years. It was a ten-year study five years ago.
But we're about to spend a bunch of money. We've already spent twenty-two thousand dollars. Are what is, I wanna understand what it is that we're all asking for going forward. A community center for the next twenty years or forty years or what?
No, what, I I think I phrased it really well. We're looking to see what, what is the best value we can squeeze out of an asset we currently have there that's doing nothing with the available funds and budgets that we have. That's why what goes into that building is a big T B P. The question is, can we afford to do the twenty-five thousand square feet pre-mold? Can we afford to up, put the third level on it, make it, I don't know, seventy thousand square feet or? I think, I screwed that number up big time.
But to your point, we may decide to, we may decide to fill it a hundred percent with community and recreation services. Now, what's generally fully scary is we could, and I don't think, I think there's a zero percent chance to say, oh, we can move transit fully over there. My point is, is we're not making the determination what we're putting into that facility. We're investigating what is the best use of that facility. And our hopes is, is to be able to increase, we know where, we know where our needs are. And we're hoping to be able to address a lot of those needs in this project.
I don't know that, I'm I'm not hearing that we know what our community needs are. I mean, they needed a pool. Of course, we can't afford it, and I get that. But I mean, other than for a community center, what are the things that that we, that they want? How much does it cost? What all can we afford?
So we're just gonna make this a work session right now, just for the last two minutes, but if you can't afford it, do we postpone looking at our empty building until we can afford something there?
Well, if you take all the money that we have to build another city hall over there, and we don't even know what we're gonna do with this, and we still don't have a community center, I'm not.
That's not what we're doing. That's not what we're doing.
I'm sorry, I, that's what it sounds like, because, because you're, because that's what you said, is that we couldn't afford a community center.
No, we couldn't afford the OPSIS community center.
Well, we couldn't.
But first, specifically, yeah, I'm, I'm, guys, I'm worried that just renovating the current building as is.
It could.
We're, we're, that, that's gonna break the budget. Long enough, a third floor, long enough, a gymnasium, long enough, like all these other things, right? Like, it gets back to what we want versus what we need. And I worry we're not even gonna be able to afford what we need.
Right. I I I swear on that. I think we have an opportunity. We have, we have things that are.
We're way out front here. But 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 regardless, coming up to time, I hate to do that. I I'm feeling, well, I haven't heard from Rich, but I I I am seeing, you know, really a five to one strong way of like, let's continue on this process. I'm like, God.
Well, I wanna involve the community and hear from them.
We all do.
You will.
We all did too.
You totally will. We all do too. We also went, we also went through a park that started off with the counselor wanting a pump track, and it ended with a pump track. So I mean, there's community engagement in between, but it started with wanting a pump track, ended with a pump track. So we'll see where this project goes.
Mayor can add one.
Yeah.
I know we're timed, but um, you know, this was obviously just a council work session to kind of get up to speed. Obviously, the funding mechanism for this project in the future would be urban renewals. There was, there will be much more discussion with your renewal board, uh, an updated urban renewal financial plan. Uh, we still need to schedule that project prioritization for the urban renewal board that uh, we were holding up until we had a permanent city manager in place. And so there's still a lot of other components to this discussion. Um, I just don't wanna lose sight of that because it's not just this group that's making, you know, next step decisions. There, there's a a larger sort of approach that still needs to take place with that as well.
All right, we'll close up the session. Oh, yeah, Rich, yeah, hi, Rich.
Hi, Rich.
I I am here. I've been listening. It's a, it's been a very uh, it's been a very fruitful conversation, I guess. Um, it it's even more when you're listening to it. Uh, the um, so I, I don't really understand a, as a work session, we typically provide some direction. Like, what, what direction are you even looking for, Tyler? Because with all respect, it sounds like you guys already have a plan. Are you just talking to us or or what's, to be frank, I don't even really know what was going on tonight. I mean, I saw, I saw the the schematics and I, I heard, but I I kind of, I mean, I agree with Kathleen, but I also understand using the spot. Was this supposed to just kind of brief us, or are you looking for some direction like out of a normal?
It's checking, it's a brief with a check of the pulse. We're checking, well, to make sure that we're not moving dramatically in a wrong direction.
Yeah, I mean, I I, I don't really know that we, I guess I'm not really, I'm trying to recall of a conversation where we really had a a kind of a dive into that building. It sounds like, and I'm just giving you my perspective, it sounds like a lot of conversations were had at um, the the meetings, uh, the park exploratory meeting or or whatever that uh, group is called. But I don't, I don't know that I'm very well versed on that as well either. And so I think that might be something Kathleen's thing. I think it just kind of feels like we're being caught on the side, and there's been obviously a lot of, it it feels like there's been a lot of conversations that um, I guess that maybe I wasn't.
I guess what I would say is, we're also looking for trust from our fellow counselors. Uh, you know, we break out in the committees, and there's a lot of times that committees report back to this group. And it's a pulse check, and that happened a lot with the park. It happened a lot with other projects. It happens a lot with wastewater and water infrastructure. Happens a lot with the homelessness uh, committee. And I guess I don't understand why this committee has to, you know, go through such, you know, turmoil every time it just wants to update and get a, you know, kind of a general check of the pulse of of council. Uh, we're, we're checking in. We're gonna continue to get public engagement. Uh, but this isn't, I mean, us going off and having a subcommittee to try to get progress in between council meetings is not any different than any of the other committees that I've just listed. It just seems like the feedback we get from council is different when we report back.
And the the data, the details, Rich, that you're pointing at, those are in those public, those public reports, not committee discussion.
Yeah, no, I think you're, I think you're, I think you guys are, everyone's on the defensive tonight a little bit, because that wasn't meant to be pointing fingers at anybody or anything. Um, I just think it it kind of, and whether that was intended or not, doesn't seem like the normal work session uh, tonight. So I, it it's not pointing fingers at conversations. I'm just saying, I think from, from like, to kind of put a little basis to it, I thank you for checking in, and I appreciate that. But I also understand how it can kind of feel from, I don't wanna speak for Kathleen, but for anybody else that's kind of coming from the outside. Um, it it seems like you, you guys were comfortable with the the conversation, and maybe just had a little more time and a little more understanding where this was just kind of a little more of a jolt for us. That's all. Uh, it's not meant to be derogatory. I completely agree with what you're saying and understand. Uh, but I also understand the other's perspective as well. That's all I'm trying to say.
It was a bit, you know, it was a big thing that all, you know, we were looking at that as a community center, and now we're looking at it as a new city hall. And I kind of heard him talk about that.
Please don't characterize it that way. That would be a mischaracterization.
Okay, well, I I'm trying to understand the staff report, and that's, and it sounds like it's both. And so I'm just trying to kind of understand, is it both? Is it one of the others?
This is very preliminary.
I know.
Number one. Number two, I am more than happy to meet with you and go over everything I know.
Yeah.
And we can, we can work through.
I think my biggest issue is that y'all met like August twenty-fourth, and here it is October one. And I feel like there's been a lot of direction or, you know, direction.
That's two meetings.
Right. I, what I'm saying, what I'm saying, I I don't know. I don't know how, how, it just seems like, and there's, there's this really fast timeline coming up. And so I feel a little bit rushed and like I don't understand the back stuff.
Then, then you and me.
Yeah.
We can spend some time and we can, we can figure it out.
Cool.
All right, uh, let's break for a couple of minutes. Uh, now we'll get back at seven ten. All right, thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Sean.
Thanks, Sean. Really appreciate the presentation.
Thanks, Sean.
All right, may call this Sandy City Council meeting in order. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome, everyone. I'll uh, do a quick review of tonight's agenda. The math Jeff will call the roll, and I'll be calling for any proposed changes to the agenda. We'll then go to public comment. We didn't have anybody submit either here or online uh, for public comment.
No, we did not.
Uh, we do not have a response to last week's public comments. So we'll move straight ahead to our consent agenda. It says at City Council meeting minutes from September eighteenth. In our new business, we have the contract award for operations center expansion design, purchase authorization, three thirty-five foot Gilig electric buses. Uh, and a purchase authorization for two mid-sized transit vehicles. And we will then round off the evening with a report from our city manager and our committee and council reports. If that, Jeff Lee, please call the roll.
Yes, Counselor Maiden.
Present.
Counselor Smallwood.
Here.
Counselor Sheldon.
Here.
Counselor Walker.
Here.
Counselor Exner.
Here.
Counselor Huckinson.
Here.
Mayor Polian.
Here. Um, all right, uh, is there any proposed changes to tonight's agenda? Hearing that, we'll move ahead to our consent agenda with our City Council meeting minutes from September eighteenth. So on this discussion, I will entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Mayor, I had a question on the, on the meeting minutes.
Okay.
And it kind of relates to the work session that we just had. When you gave the, when you gave your update of last meeting, there were lots of notes that people said comments about it, about the CCS, that I don't see any of those listed in the meeting minutes. And specifically, I remember the community center being mentioned, and it's, it's not in there at all in the meeting minutes as an objectiveable topic. And that's just for transparency. I wanna make sure that that gets noted. Uh, because that's, I think what was missing from today's report was that none of those words were said. So people weren't feeling heard the last time they said it. So I might just think that they used to make sure we're, we're on top of that.
So Counselor, can I just ask you for your feedback? So on page four, when it talks about providing community meeting space, community center, do you feel like that should have gone into further depth, maybe?
Oh, I was on page nine when, when the mayor gave his update, because that's when, I know I responded. Um, you said page four.
What are we looking at? I'm sorry.
The meeting minutes from September eighteen?
It's four.
It's a four-page document.
Yeah.
He's in the pack.
Oh.
Are you on page four?
Oh, I'm sorry. I, okay, I'm sorry. So I'm looking at this just, okay.
The one that ends with staff updates and monthly reports in the journal? Yeah, it's right, it was right at the end of the meeting, because the mayor brought it up, and we, and I remember then going, oh, I haven't even heard about this, what's going on, made me look into it. And I was just saying, I'm looking at the notes saying, I thought all those were in that meeting. We talked about it. I mean, it was very vague in general, but I didn't see the notes written in the meeting minutes. And and then I didn't see them in today's presentation, so I thought, nah, maybe they got missed. And then I didn't see him in today's presentation, so I thought, nah, maybe they got missed, so.
So, so as we look at the, my, my update. Uh, recent discussions of the Sandy Community Campus on potential conversion of the middle school annex, building, buck ability and civic center space. That could accommodate workspace for staff currently occupying city hall and the community center. As well as providing community meeting space and possibly a new council chambers.
Oh, I, I missed that line.
All right, I'm, so we're in there.
Good, yeah.
We're good.
Thank you.
Good job, Jeff.
That was on the bullet below it.
No, I, I honestly, I appreciate, uh, you know, the second set of eyes.
And then see the next, um, paragraph down there, the, the pointed one, conversation about potential public partnership.
Yeah, I did, I did see that, I did see that. It was the community center I was missing.
Okay.
I'm, I'm a little, yeah, I mean, thi- this is just your.
This is just my update, that's all it is, yeah.
I mean, the, the, the second bullet about city space needs are a priority, but community meeting spaces should be of high importance.
So, are we good with minutes?
Yeah.
Because I'd like to move that we approved last meeting's minutes.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right.
I love the conversation about my report, though. Thank you, guys. Uh, minutes as well as the second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. I oppose, nay, much carries. We went ahead to new business, the contract award for the operations center expansion design. Andy, welcome.
Hi, good evening, thank you, good to be here. It sounds like Rochelle got you guys, um, on the right topic of conversation to move into awarding a contract, um, for architectural services and engineering services. Um, if you don't mind, though, before I, I jump right into that staff report, and I'm gonna try to be real tech savvy. Which I'm not, so bear with me for a minute. Um, see if that works. You're gonna see my PDF on the side, so just ignore that, please. But, um, it occurred to me, well, first of all, I put this, this, um, contract award on the agenda. And then saw that I was the only person on the agenda for the evening. So, I reached out to Jeff and Tyler and said, hey, can I throw two more things on really quickly? Um, instead of letting you guys go home and have a free night, so, um.
Thanks.
It, uh-huh, so it's almost like you guys get two work sessions tonight, um, but with decisions that need to be made. So, I appreciate, um, you having three items of mine on the agenda tonight. When I put it together, I realized after that, um, I'm talking about a lot of transit projects. Um, and so I thought it would be helpful to just kind of go through. These are, are some of our big projects that transit has, um, budgeted in this fiscal, this fiscal year and the next. Um, starting with the Ops Center Expansion, which is, uh, the staff report that we're about to talk about. Um, that is for the design of new administrative space and a maintenance bay. Um, the deliverables are schematic design, design development and construction documents. Um, I've been with the city for ten years now. I've heard for many years that we need space. Um, and I knew that the Operations Center has a master plan. So, Transit started saving money for expansion, um, or at least the planning of expansion in twenty nineteen through the STIF funding, which is in my staff report. Um, and then started looking at various grants to try and bring some funding in to, to get that shovel ready. As we all know, when we have the plans in place, the construction documents in place, then we can get the funding because we're ready. So, um, that is the goal. I, um, immediately after being awarded the funds, we had a meeting, um, that was with Sam and Public Works and Parks and Rec and Sandy Net slash IT, Police, Finance and Administration. Um, we talked about our future needs, uh, we talked about, um, what we needed at the Operations Center. Um, Transit has taken what was a small conference room at the Operations Center and it is an office. And Public Works in trying to find space is moving an archive room and hoping to develop it into office space. We are out of space and it's not very efficient the way it is. Come visit me anytime. You'll see drivers having lunch and taking a nap and having training on a screen that's really loud because they often are hearing impaired right outside my office. Anytime I have to have a meeting, I'm in that space and they, um, have nowhere to go. Um, we really need some private rooms for private conversations, for HR type conversations, for trainings. Uh, PW, as you all, all know, uh, is adding staff. They need the space for that staff. So, um, so we did have a meeting and we put an RFP out. Um, I'm, I'm getting into my staff report and I, I don't want to do that before I kind of lay out the next two years and why you have three things in front of you. So the next thing that's happening at the Operations Center is, you guys have heard it time and time again, it's the electrification project. Um, we have to, uh, and we have worked with PGE, they have to lay a new line, we need a new transformer. Um, the buildings have to be somewhat retrofitted, which just means they have to put ports in that you can plug into, et cetera. Um, so we have a plan in place for that. As you guys know, we partnered with PGE. Um, and they were supposed to fund it and they did not. Um, and so we went looking for other funds and, and you can see that we did. And I know that, thank you, Mayor, you announced that we were successful, um, in that, in that grant program to try and plug that hole in our budget. So, our revenue that's in our budget just got, uh, three hundred and eighty-two thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars added to it that Transit doesn't have to pay, um, you know, with Transit funding. So, um, we also are trying to, to bring in those thirty-five foot electric buses. Um, so our bus partner, Proterra, we, um, partnered with them several years ago, actually, when we started the conversation because they are one of the first, um, really successful businesses in electric buses or manufacturer of electric buses.
Maybe you should say were.
Yes, um, we were having conversations with them. We had not signed a contract with Proterra yet for several reasons. There was a lot of back and forth. Um, we are very lucky that we did not. Nothing that we have with them was binding other than partnering with them. So, we did, uh, cross our Ts and we dotted our Is and made sure that ODOT, um, who is our liaison with the federal government. Um, said that it was okay for us to uncouple with, um, that manufacturer. And we reached out to Gilig, who, as you know, we have used for many years, currently use on Sam Gresham. Drivers love our Giligs, maintenance techs love Giligs, they're a great company. It's just that when we partnered several years ago, they did not have an electric bus out yet. Um, they have now, two years ago, they put their first electric bus out. They're doing, they're doing pretty well, so. Um, so that's my other staff report is to hopefully pivot to Proterra. Um, fourth thing that's happening is we are launching the Town Center Route, which was, is in our Transit Master Plan. Um, we're having a lot of meetings right now with Trimate that have been very successful. They are what, very welcoming. Um, they're just ready for us to hand them the route, so we've been driving various, um, routes, trying to decide if we want to pull off on Orient or stay on twenty-six, um, those types of, um, you know, not turn down Sunnyside, but a hundred and seventy-second. We're having those conversations and once we get that in place, we'll be ready to go and we're hoping we can do that by the first of the year. Um, to do that, though, um, originally, we planned on putting a medium-sized bus on that route. So we asked for two hundred and fifty thousand. However, we kind of were starting to change our mind, um, halfway through. So our budget actually did budget four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars when we put our budget through in case we wanted to buy a Gilig or an electric bus that might cost more. So, um, I'll get to that deeper in the staff report. But, but we were budgeted for a larger bus if we wanted to. It was already in the budget.
Quick question, yeah, I need, so you talked, you may go, you said something, so we're looking forward to pivoting to Proterra.
From Proterra.
From, to, yes, yes.
I, um, I said there was no way I could come to my city council and say, can we sign a contract with a company that just filed chapter eleven?
So, so your decision, are you gonna revisit the decision-making on what size of bus for that route?
I'm gonna propose something a little bit, we, so we have decided to put one of our Giligs on that route. We can't, we can't get a new, a new bus in three months. If we want to launch it in January, we decided the best option is to use a Gilig that we already have. The problem with that is, um, and this was, is in my staff report and I'll address it later as well. We have a lot of issues right now, all of you know this, about A, finding a bus. It's hard to get a bus. Um, and B, it's really hard to get parts. So when we have a bus go down, like the blue trolley has been down for months. I, I think we're probably creeping up on six months.
That's why I was saying.
That's why you haven't seen it, yep. Um, so we are really struggling with buses at the moment, so we've had two down for months. Um, so what we are hoping to do, if you approve it tonight, is buy two medium-sized gas-powered cutaways that are just, they're stock, they're already available. Um, and put one of our Giligs on the new route and then use these two cutaways wherever we need them. So, um, they won't necessarily have one route that is their assigned route. They can be put on the Sam Gresham route because we've, um, are using a Gilig that typically would serve Sam Gresham. They can be put on the Estacada route when the trolley goes down. They can be put on, um, Star Dial-a-Ride if they need to be on Star Dial-a-Ride, uh, very versatile. So that is our plan to kind of help us address the issue of not having enough buses. And also address that it takes so long to get a big new bus or to get an electric bus. This is kind of our answer to, to, it's a solution for both. Um, and then the fifth, um, that I really haven't talked a whole lot about, um, is a technology project. You did sign, uh, the grant agreement through, uh, stiff discretionary, so you have heard about it. But I haven't put the RFP out yet. I'm hoping to have it out in two weeks. Um, there is a lot in there. The first thing I want to do is, uh, get E-fares where you can pay on your phone and, and not have to have cash, not have to have passes. That needs to happen immediately. Also, this is our way of getting to the technical expertise that we need without hiring, um, an IT staff of our own. Have them come in and set some best practices, help us troubleshoot, make sure that we don't have equipment that is doing, could do the same thing. Um, for example, we use Passio and we also use Single Point to provide wifi to the public. Uh, Passio probably has the ability to be that wifi service and we could get rid of Single Point. And since we, um, just partnered with Passio, that might be a less expensive option for us. So, just some tech experts to do all of, there's like four different really big projects that I'm planning to put in that RFP. Um, and these have to happen in the next two years because these are grant run. So, uh, the thirty-five foot buses, that they don't have to happen in two years. I have three years on that grant. Uh, but most other grant process is two years, so. Hopefully, that, um, helps you kind of understand moving into the Ops Center Expansion and the award. I, um.
By the way, I think this is the coolest graphic anybody's ever brought me from, since I've been with council.
Thank you. I have recently, um, someone allowed me to, um, join their team on Canva. Have you heard of this software? Yeah, everybody's, I had never heard of it.
Yeah, my wife's addicted to it.
I did this on Canva in like thirty minutes this weekend. Yes, I love it, so. No, I didn't, I should, I should. Um, okay. So with that, if we could go back to, and I have a PowerPoint if you want more information, but I can also oh, I didn't stop sharing, sorry, but I can also, um, pull that PowerPoint up if you'd like. The, um, decision in for, before you is about the, um, Operations Center Expansion Project. Uh, this is for the design only and the deliverables are to come out of it, as I said, with construction documents. Um, you can see that we had AJ Thorn, myself, Greg Brewster, uh, Muna Rustam, Tiana Rundell, Ryan Wood, we're all on the evaluation committee, so, um, and the RFP, it's in here if you've read it. Uh, was very clear that this is an interdepartmental project. Um, so I will say that all of us at the table, that's what we were listening for when we were reading these proposals, is that do they understand that this is not a transit project? Um, we actually had eight proposals, which, um, was great and, and really good, good firms. This was a very interesting process. Um, we chose to bring four, um, firms back for interviews. Uh, Greg and AJ dropped out of the interview process, their schedules, uh, couldn't line up and you had to be at all four or none. So, um, last minute, both of them had to drop out. Um, but the rest of us were still in there and, um, MWA Architects actually won. One thing that I, um, and they were all good, all four were exceptional. You can see who they are in the report. Waterleaf, um, was on the original master plan. Um, and they were a very strong candidate, Soderstrom, uh, who was the architect that worked on, um, the two bus barns that I just built and is an excellent firm as well, was one of the, the firms. Uh, Pivot out of Eugene, which is, uh, absolutely stellar, uh, but also gave us a bid at six hundred and six thousand dollars. Um, was one of the finalists and then MWA. I should add, um, that when we went into this process, we did not take lowest cost. Um, we did not even factor in cost to weed down to who we want, wanted to interview. We did consider the cost of the project during the interview phase. Um, but it was only, it was more of a, what are we getting for the cost? It wasn't who's, who's the least expensive or who's the most expensive. It's, is this firm giving us the same deliverable as this firm, even though they might be less.
Right.
Um, so I didn't include, I, I did include the scoring, et cetera, in this report. But I didn't include a lot about costs because like I said, it, it was not a deciding factor one way or the other.
But important to know, I, I read that you have the funds to cover.
Yeah.
Right?
Yes, yes, yes.
So in that regard, funds to cover it, I noticed that part of this process is being paid for at a transit payroll taxes.
Yes.
Which I pay.
Yes, you do, thank you.
Not very much.
Appreciate that.
Um, not a hundred and, yeah, sixty-five thousand dollars, but, uh, pay a little bit. Um, is there, uh, because you are going up all the time, is there a potential that going to a larger percentage? In the future, are, are you well financed with all the federal grants that you give? I know you do a spectacular job. I can't say enough about how the grant part of transit building is just spectacular.
Thank you, thank you, we try.
But what does the payroll side look like?
The payroll side is actually, um, doing fairly well. Um, I would, I've been asked this question before. And my answer is always that, I mean, times change, things change. You did say if things were to differ, but I would, um, I would look to other means of revenue first before I would look to raise that.
Appreciate that. This is not that kind of conversation tonight, but just looking at the sixty-five grand for the transit. So, did you have to go to the transit to cover up your, or are you playing just in the federal?
So I did have to a little bit because I got, so I do have grant funding, there's always match in grant funding. So part of that is our match. Um, and then because, and then I do have, as I said, I've started putting funds away, um, in twenty nineteen. But it's been like little here, little here, so that's about a hundred and eight thousand. Um, and then the rest, like I said, is the match and then the little bit that's still left.
Okay, all right.
For reference, you get about six hundred thousand a year in employer tax?
I think, um, yes, although I think we even were close to eight hundred thousand recently.
And things took a pretty big dip during the pandemic, but it definitely rebounded, so talking about that. That difference between the match and what she needs to use out of transit funds is like twenty-five thousand and change. It's, it's a real drop in the bucket in the overall.
Yeah.
Funding from the employer tax.
Yeah, Kathleen.
I, I had a question on the, um, what is it, the, the proposal from NWA, very well done. And, um, there was a drawing, just conceptual drawing there on page twenty-nine and Jeff is bringing it up and just putting it on the big screen there. And I was just curious about the, um, so the maintenance building, is that going to have any crew space or anything else, or is that just for rigs?
That is maintenance, I, you know, um.
Maybe that's still conceptual when it's getting.
It is, well, this, so this actually is pretty much exactly what is in, um, the Transit Master Plan. Yeah, so, um.
And the original P, uh, Ops Center Master Plan.
I'm sorry, yes, I meant the, obviously, thank you. No, but now I have an idea to download this and use it in my next Canva, um, PDF. Okay, so no, primarily what happened, so you see the bus wash and the bus wash, it obviously is already in existence. The plan has the, uh, maintenance bay connecting with the bus wash and there's actually a couple of bays in there, one is drive-through and one is not. But it's, it's all for pulling a bus in and, yeah, and doing maintenance. There's no. Crew space, there's no office space planned, it's just you're pulling in vehicles. They could sit in there overnight and charge, um, we do have a plan to have a charge in this space as well. Um, but it's just vehicles.
Yeah, my question also seemed the little blue, it's a little hard to read the thing, but from what I understand, the, the black box to the left, and I don't know how to, uh, it says N.
It's right here, admin.
Yeah, and, um, to the left of the N, that's the existing space. And then you've got the blue space outlined and that's this project. And then it says future space in between the, those two, are we building a separate building or is that all just get built onto the existing, um, building?
So I'm not sure where it says, um, future space, let me get down to it on my screen too.
Oh, wait, I can see better. Yeah, it's at the bottom, the little, you see, this project is blue, well, no, it's down at the, um, you know.
Oh, future phase, okay, so, um, yeah, so I'm not sure why there is so much dots, but the, the future phase, the only thing that is a future phase, so there is the empty dotted square below maintenance. Um, that's empty.
Oh, no, I'm just talking about your office admin building.
Okay, so, so, yeah, um, the square on the left is the existing. On the right is the new admin. Um, and that project, so it probably should be larger than that. This almost makes it look like she's just talking about the sidewalk. Um, where it says North Admin is like grass and then there's a sidewalk and a generator, um.
I mean, I, is that, like, is, so, so what's confusing me is this project is just like a, a thing on to the right. And then there's the existing building and then there's kind of future phase in the middle, so I'm like, that's what I'm kind of confused.
Yeah, no, it's that whole space. Yeah, so, and part of the conversation too, and, and obviously this is what we'll talk about, right? Um, and they'll give us various, and, and they know and it's very clear and one of the things that we liked about them a lot, um, is that they're going to do Costa estimates throughout, right? And they're going to let us know, and this group in particular, um, really hit on the, sometimes you want to renovate and not just have a new building. So you could put a second building that's unattached as the new admin building. You can just renovate the building that you have now and that might be less expensive to do, um, et cetera. So this is just showing the footprint and it does look like they're just talking about that one little strip, but it is that whole, that whole back grass area.
Cause the question that I had heard was that there was going to possibly be considered a, um, trailer, you know, office trailer for additional PW staff in the short term.
Yes, so.
So, and so, you know, my thing up here has always been like, okay, what's our future needs? And let's see if we can make sure that we're, you know, if we're going to be putting a lot of money into, let's make sure we get as much future needs as possible.
Right. Yes, um, so the, um, the small dotted area over here that is a future phase, I'm just going to stand up and point, if you don't mind, um.
Work with Jeff.
Those are actually buildings that are already in the Operation Center Master Plan that are PW buildings that just haven't been built. So, um, I know that PW has had the conversation about what if we put a modular there until we built. They've talked about that on and off for, you know, a couple of years now, I think. I, I know Kim had mentioned that, as a matter of fact, just as a, you know, the school system did it over here and if you really needed space, you could put one there for a couple of years while you built or while you planned it, et cetera. But, um, I did not take those buildings into consideration in this process. I'm just interested in the administrative space and the maintenance bay.
And so for the administration, that's for both transit and public works.
Yeah, so that is another conversation that, you know, through the process, Tyler's already had some great ideas about how, how you fund it, creative ways to, um, you know, to fund shared space, so it's not just transit that's funding an entire building of a building, yeah.
Thank you.
You got it.
All right, those are just further questions or discussion, I entertain a motion to, for contract award.
I'll make a motion that, um, the, I move to approve the Evaluation Committee's recommendation and authorize staff to negotiate and execute a contract with MWA Architects in an amount not to exceed three hundred and thirty-one thousand, five hundred and thirty-four dollars for the architectural and engineering design of Sandy Operation Center Expansion Project.
Motion by Counselor Walker, a second by Counselor Hopkins, and all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, aye. Oppose nay, or thumbs down. Motion carries.
Wonderful.
Moving ahead to purchase authorization for those three thirty-five foot Gillig electric buses.
Thank you, so I, I feel like I've already, um, kind of outlined this quite a bit. These buses do cost more than Proterra buses. In my opinion, Gillig is the best bus manufacturer out there. They're the, also the easiest to work with and most important, they, right next to the factory where they build their buses is also where they distribute parts. So you work with Gillig to get parts, um, which is a much better system than most other bus manufacturers. So, um, I would like to pivot from Proterra who filed Chapter eleven to purchase Gillig vehicles. I tried to, uh, just let you know that, that it is more than it's budgeted. I am comfortable because, for a couple of reasons, one, I already mentioned that, um, I budgeted for four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for the two cutaways we're going to talk about. So we're saving money, um, in the budget from, by buying two medium vehicles and using one of our own. We also, uh, brought the extra income from the Carbon Reduction Act, uh, grant. And then we also were successful in getting more CARES Act money, which we can use towards operation, which frees up our transit tax, um, for this project. So I'm very comfortable with the, uh, difference in funding and I can't tell you enough how my shop is actually really excited because the drivers are like, we still get to drive Gillig's and they might be electric, but they'll, they'll look exactly the same. And the mechanic is like, yes, it's still going to be a Gillig, so, um, sometimes I think things just turn out the way they're supposed to in the first place.
So you, you're using a different model, how, how about the maintenance of that? Is there going to be any issues that are different than originally anticipated, electrical connections? Um, any other maintenance? I know that you have to have a specialized mechanic to work on it, so have you looked into those things that are different?
I have, um, and some of the grant funding through the federal, um, low and no emissions grant does cover exactly that, um, you know, I, when they work on the vehicles, for example, um, if they were to work on the vehicles at Sandy Transit, um, you have to have a ladder, um, because they will be working on the top of the bus. Um, the least expen, well, when I say ladder, it's a platform and it's pretty expensive. Uh, the least expensive way to keep them safe is to connect a harness, um, from the ceiling in case they get shocked, they don't fall. Um, so there's like, there are some things that will have to be done, um, wherever these vehicles are worked on and we'll have to pay for it. Uh, we are working, so we have recently changed our vendor, our maintenance vendor. And we are working with our new vendor to get the proper training to be an elec, you know, electric bus.
Extra money, it's going to be funded through your grant request.
Yes, yeah, it's included in the grant, yeah.
Well, it's already included.
It's included in the grant.
A couple of questions on the specific estimate, you deducted a couple of things from the Washington, um, standard. They're not a lot of money, but, and I'll mention them because I was like, just curious why, so like LED lights got replaced with halogens for five hundred dollar savings. These, a couple of warranties, extended warranties, uh, for less than a eight hundred dollars. Half the warranties that saved eight hundred dollars. Do you have any thinking on why the penny pinching in those categories?
So that, so this, um, is not necessarily the final what you'll see, which is why I say we will partner with Proterra not to exceed. Um, this is built, this is how our vehicles have been built in the past. So Gillig took what we've asked for in the past and sent us a quote based on how we built our vehicles in the past. So these are some of the things that we opted out of in the past. They already have a pretty significant warranty and they're excellent to work with.
Okay, I just did want you to mention a few pennies for.
Thank you.
That might, you know, for its longer term on a cost model. Also, the biggest one is the missing, the optional extra battery pack. Are you sure you don't want all the battery you can afford right now?
That's a good question. In talking with Gillig, we went back and forth on how important that extra battery pack was. My Gillig sales rep, um, tended to think it was expensive, but when they told me how much it was, I can't remember, I want to say like sixty-five thousand and I remember thinking that's, that's not really that expensive.
Under sixty, sixty thousand.
Yeah, which would give us longer range.
And, um, more insurance as the battery performance degrades over time.
Right.
Still, the, the difference between batteries usually, you still have performance, it just reduces over time, so you might eat more life out of it by doing that. The downside is you add the extra weight and then you're holding the weight around.
Right, it's a lot of extra weight, yeah, yeah. So because of the way we have it designed and the fact that we're getting three, um, and the way that we are thinking we're going to change them out, we hopefully can use the three instead of two diesel. We can use the three and have them coming and going. They will probably also only run our peak services and maybe not necessarily early morning and not necessarily late at night until we have more Gil, you know, more vehicles that can cover everything. Um, and so I didn't feel like it was that important to add the sixth battery.
All right, your motion to move ahead with the purchase authorization. Fair, I'll make a motion, I move to authorize staff to purchase the three Gillig electric buses as detailed in the agenda pack. Second, motion by Counselor May, a second by Counselor Exmer. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye, give me a thumbs up. Oppose nays or, uh, thumbs down. Motion carries. Moving ahead on our agenda to the purchase authorization for two mid-sized transit vehicles.
Okay, so I have already explained how we're going to use these vehicles, um, primarily as backup. I put out, um, an RFQ, which is how we do it, um, with the state contracts vendor, contracted vendors. Um, and I just said, what do you have in stock? What can I have, uh, by year end? I gave them, as you, as you see in this report, I gave them, um, you know, kind of the basic, this is the size I want, this is the engine size at least, um, seating, wheelchairs, et cetera, ADA. Two, well, three got back to me, but two, um, one was a twenty-fourteen and, um, that wasn't going to happen for eighty-nine thousand dollars. So anyway, um, so it came down to the two. I did get an email from Kathleen earlier and I, I think you were all CC'd and she said, why did you pick the one that was more expensive? Which I did, so I'd like to explain that because I, I didn't explain that very well. Um, in the RFQ that I put out, I requested that the vehicle, and I think you can see it on page one fifty-five. Although this is another vendor's bid, this is the example that I gave them of the vehicle that I want for several reasons. One, um, Sam prides themselves on our customer service. We changed a long time ago from vehicles that put any ADA passengers in the very back of the bus to in the front of the bus. Um, one, it's a more comfortable ride for somebody who has mobility issues. Two, the driver can see them better and has, uh, better access. And, um, three, it just, nobody wants to be forced to be in the back of the bus. Um, and so, uh, the, the two vendors that got back to us, um, one of their vehicles, we also requested a back door, um, in the vehicle and that is because, um, for safety reasons, most vehicle fires obviously start in the front, in the engine, um, during accidents and so we often will request a, an emergency back door on our vehicle. So the bus that is less expensive, um, did not have an emergency back door and I'm going to share my screen again, if you don't mind. Uh, let's see. You have to push share. Okay, so this is the design of the less expensive vehicle and as you can see, the wheelchair, the ADA, um, wheelchair attachments are in the back, there's no emergency back door. They also don't have destination sign windows in the front or the side of the bus, which is really important if you're planning on using a bus on different routes. They, people need to know when the bus pulls up, where it's going, obviously, and it did not have that either. The bus that we did choose, let's see. Looks like this on the inside, so you can see, um, you can put the ADA wheelchair anywhere in the bus because those tracks in the floor are what you use to secure a wheelchair. So they get to choose, all the seats can be flipped up and they can sit wherever they need to in the bus. There's an emergency back door and there's destination signs in the front of the vehicle on the side of the vehicle. So that is why we opted for the more expensive buses. It also has a larger engine and is a more sturdy bus and it's on a Ford chassis instead of a Chevy and most of our fleet is already Ford, so our maintenance coordinator prefers that we stick to that. Um, and finally, again, we're actually saving money in our budget because I allocated for four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in the, in the proven budget.
Yeah, this is all out of my own curiosity. One of my best friends is a wheelchair. When I see this schematic on, on page one fifty-five, I, I, I do appreciate the wheelchair access up front too.
Right.
I'm wondering if all the seats are down and there is an accident and you got the safety door open, how does a wheelchair get down the aisle? Cause it looks very narrow on the picture, is there enough room for a wheelchair?
There is enough room for a wheelchair, yeah, well, you know, um, that's a really good, that's a really good point. There probably is not with the seats down. They would have to prob, go back out the ramp.
I mean, if the ramp was damaged and the fire's in the front.
The driver's going to have to put those seats up. Yep, yep, and pull them out the back, yep. Thanks for asking, yeah.
Is there any safety? Is there any safety issues compared to attempting a wider bus? Or I suppose it'd be faster, I suppose, but nobody says, oh, this is not gonna be ADA or whatever. I don't know. There's a law against it. To me, it's just a matter of how you get them out of there.
Well, their, so their exit is actually, you can see the ramp right across from them. So I understand what you're saying, that if that is damaged or there's a fire up front, but they do still then have the other option, you just have to put the seats up. And if we get any wider, we're not gonna fit on the street.
Yeah, I'm just used to seeing that door in the middle.
Mm-hmm, and this one's, this one, if you if you saw it on the side, it's exactly what you're used to.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's just, it looks like it's in the front, but it's the driver's area that's the window in front of it, so.
There's a drawing in the one of the beds. I just had a quick question um on, and this is a little odd topic, but you brought it up earlier about trolleys.
Uh-huh.
And so, um, you know, they're cute.
Yeah.
But are they kinda, you know, but then when you say getting these, you know, they're parts are interchangeable, you know, and there's something to be said for just consistency and the standard generic, you know, plug and play and things that maybe aren't as cute, is there? I mean.
So the 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 trolley is also a Ford. So it 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 just looks
It looks
like a trolley. Yeah, so it is more expensive because as, I mean, you wrote on it yesterday, right? So I mean, you know, there's brass fittings and it's um, they're very nice. The lights that are inside are actually, you know, lights that come on RVs, not lights that are typically in transit. So when you buy it up front, um, it is a little more expensive than these, but it's still a Ford. Ford is a Ford is a Ford.
But getting it fixed and everything, are they kind of more difficult to repair?
Not necessarily. Uh, it's a little bit more difficult to check the oil because there's a a large box you have to remove to do that. So but as far as repairs, it's no, it's the same, yeah.
Your motion before.
I move to authorize staff to purchase two gasoline-powered and mid-sized cutaway vehicles from selecting bus sales as detailed in the agenda.
All right, um, is there a second?
Second.
Motion by councillor Exner, a second by councillor Hockenson. All those in favor signify by saying aye or give me a thumbs up. Aye. Oppose nays or a thumbs down? Motion carries. Andy, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great having you, thanks for everything.
Appreciate it.
Tyler, of course, you'll see enter.
Thank you, Mayor. I was gonna say a round of applause for the Andy show this evening. Acknowledge that, so.
Thank you.
Where's your uh, where's your Kenba?
Yeah, yeah. You didn't hire me for my artistic ability. That was not on the essential functions uh in that recruitment player. Um, so have some uh exciting news about a new app that we have or will have available very soon. We're dubbing it My Sandy. It's a a way for our residents here in Sandy to interact with various departments, specifically report issues and concerns they have, whether it's streets, water, sewer connection issues, uh, park issue, broken whatever, you know, anything that they wanna report that they would normally either call City Hall and be transferred to the appropriate department. They can direct them to their smartphone now. It's also through the same provider as our uh financial software company. So if you can, you know, from a button, get directed to pay your bill and um, you know, set up a payment plan or anything like that, we would normally do with the utility department. So hopefully increases some functionality and and um
My Sandy?
My Sandy.
Technically, My Sandy OR, but you could just type it in.
It's in there now?
Yeah, it's there now. Oh, yeah, it it it's there now. We've been sort of, we've been testing it internally. I didn't wanna really do a big advertising push until we make sure.
Well, I gotta get it out there so people know. That's one of the complaints I hear occasionally is, don't know what's happening in the city. How you doing? How you been?
Capital Place Store on the
I mean, we'll do a full sort of press, definitely.
Okay.
On the advertising. We, it's called this like a soft up thing, make sure there's no bugs or
Yeah, we're on all the takes first, but
Looks cool.
Yeah, we're excited to have just another way for community members to reach us without having to wait for a phone call back or leave a voicemail or whatever else so they can report their issue, you know, right when it's happening.
This code enforcement too?
Yep, so I'm sure we'll get an onslaught of things to begin with. Yeah, which is great, you know, we we encourage uh uh the public process and we look forward to getting those complaints and issues reported in a timely fashion.
So what type, what type of login information goes with that?
Uh, what's My Sandy OR?
Um, that's a great question that I don't have an answer for right now, but I can get back to you.
And I'm hoping it's actually, what an actually is our login and not just anonymous.
So I know for certain aspects of it, it's definitely a login. I don't know if the report your issue feature is anonymous or if that's also tied to the login, but I can let you know if I have to
The only thing I'd point out, I'll just leave it, let it sit here, is I noticed that you used a picture of the old City Hall with the old colors.
The only picture we have, Mayor.
And so that might be an indication that we need new colors for City Hall. Uh, but anyways, I'll just let that sit out.
We had joked that, you know, the track record now is that the new city manager paints City Hall.
Oh, yeah.
So
Kenba will uh Photoshop.
We can do some color samples and make sure it looks good.
Is Tyler Technologies any relationship?
It is not.
Okay.
But I in part feel that that's why I got my first job here because we were transitioning to Tyler and I made the point in my interview that what a perfect fit because Tyler can manage Tyler.
Self-managed.
Sort of, yeah. Uh, uh, let's see, so uh we had the grand, or the ribbon cutting rather for three sixty-second and Bell yesterday. Um, we have a meeting first thing tomorrow morning to get an updated project timeline for that final striping. Hopefully we'll get a new date sent out to everyone as far as when the actual opening will occur, but very, very soon.
Cool.
I hope so, is what I can tell you today.
Cool.
And then last but not least, we also have a homelessness task force meeting tomorrow morning um with representatives from, yeah, far moving currently working with the um task force made up of the the two city council members for the subcommittee, uh, police chief, myself. Uh, so we'll have some other information to put back. Still making progress in that, in that endeavor and continuing to meet and try to troubleshoot things before they happen.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Tom?
Cool, thanks, um, really cool event for the volunteers that I was able to go to. Uh, amazing how many, I think, uh, Mayor and I were talking about the number of hours people gave. Used a really low ball number, I think, the real cost if we were to staff that with staff hours and pers and everything would be two or three times that.
I agree, probably.
I agree. Tyler went with twenty dollars.
And a bigger number.
You're gonna value your your volunteers at twenty an hour? Come on, man.
So listen.
It's actually higher, the state, the state validated uh thing that you can use on the value of a match. I wanna say it's thirty-one.
Wow, so okay. Depends on how you're reporting, right? If I do work for SCOP, we use minimum wage.
Yeah, I like it, I like it.
All right, anyway, I just expressed my gratitude there for everybody that together. And also just uh a kind of an apology, you know, I know Kathleen and and Rich and others probably felt like, you know, maybe maybe we uh kinda surprised you today with that work session and uh just my pledge to work with any of you, you Kathleen, Rich, anybody else uh as far as my understanding what that committee's doing, I'm happy to to reach out or you reach out to me and we'll we'll go through it. So anyway, that's it.
Thanks, Tom.
Tom. Um, I know this is getting to be a little bit of a record, um, broken record, but uh I'm still seeing trucks running down Langins. And I I think a a weight limit sign would really do a lot to slow that down and uh getting to be the winter time and off roads and all that stuff. So we could figure out a way to move forward.
Yeah, uh after the last meeting, I did talk to Ryan about what sign we currently have, which I think is just a picture of a truck with the line, uh, you know, the the circle with a line through it that's over there. Uh, he was gonna look into a a larger sort of no-through-truck sign or some something that we've seen in some other communities, so that that is on our radar now. Councillor Exner, um, can't give you a timeline on when that will be installed, but we're we're working on
Okay.
other options for signage in that area.
Appreciate that. Uh, I did attend the a fire board meeting as uh just to listen in and a lot of conversation about the ending of the Cedar Creek Fire, twenty million dollars, I guess, but it was all charged to the federal dollars, not to anything local.
Is it done?
No.
It's smaller, that's what I thought.
It's a smaller thing from here until next spring. Lots of that kind of stuff that you watch for in the next few years. And I think they're they're all pretty happy that there won't be much impact to the reservoir. But there will be a number of rehab um teams watching and taking care of anything that comes up. So I guess I look forward to seeing and hearing something about a rehab issues. Uh, just as a thing on the calendar, on Friday night at six o'clock, there will be an art show at the library. Excited to see that and take a look at that, so. All right, that's it.
Um, thanks for y'all organizing the ribbon cutting. It was uh very well done and I enjoyed seeing everybody out there celebrating the big event. I had forwarded a email um as a Facebook post, but you know, it's something I see often brought up in Facebook and it's just the kind of the cluster circus that happens there around the middle school, both in the morning and in the afternoon about um folks lined up on, you know, parked parked on Bluff Road waiting for school to let out and all. And then it gets backed up into the twenty-sixth light and then it's a real cluster. And so, you know, I kinda had mentioned the idea, you know, every time I have to deal with that, I'm, since I live on Bluff, it's uh, you know, the idea that we could be lining cars up down Hood Street on the north side of Hood Street, you know, just along to the to tennis courts. And um and then put no stopping, no loading or unloading along Bluff there. Cause you know, they're they're parked in bike lane and in the roadway. You know, one lady kinda said, well, yeah, but the problem with that is that when we get up to Bluff, you know, we, they they don't let us in or something, or there's too many cars coming. And I'm, you know, part of me is like, well, yeah, but you don't necessarily have to go out on Bluff or, you know, you can also, you know, if you just walk, let your kids walk to the car rather than, you know, picking them up the front door of the school. Um, anyways, I think there's a way, you know, it'll be interesting to see how much or how little impact the new road access has on that problem. I'm okay with waiting a, you know, a couple of months to see how it all pans out, but because this has been a problem, you know, for far longer. But uh I would, you know, if it continues to be a problem, I think there are some solutions that we could put forward to try to address it, so looking for that.
And uh Tyler, I think it could be a good topic to bring up if you reengage in the uh, uh, what do you call it, the local leader lunch you guys do or whatever?
We have that on the calendar for next week, so then you can have the conversation amongst.
Yeah.
Can we get those whistles they use at the airport?
Yeah, right.
No. They'll be whistles.
And then I am meeting with the the museum, uh, a couple of the museum reps and just talking to them. They got, and then just talking about with uh Austin, the guy that did the tree harvesting or tree carving thing. I'm just talking about some of the things he's interested in doing. Um, looking forward to that. And then, you know, finally, I'll just say, like I said, I, it always helps me to have all the visuals ahead of time. And so, you know, not, all I had was a staff report today, so everything I heard. And I guess I didn't read the meeting minutes because I I didn't read all your notes in there. You know, I think I just skimmed through the actual things we talked about, but I didn't pay any attention to all that. And maybe I forgot, I don't know. But I I'm looking for a win-win here. I'm looking for, you know, something to meet the community needs and the staff in needs. I just think they need to be, you know, both looked at real carefully and to and 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 do as much as we can. And if, you know, nothing else, we look at, you know, phasing something in in the future or something, you know. And I appreciate Lori's comment about, you know, Parks District Two and stuff in the future. I'm just kinda concerned that we seem to just go so piecemeal, you know, one way or the other and then without looking at the big picture. So I'm excited about finding something that works uh for everybody's needs.
Um, when you meet with the museum, one thing I'd be interested in is some project to classify our historic sites in Sandy.
Mm-hmm.
Because I do worry with some of our old buildings that I just don't wanna see stuff get torn down, but maybe we need to do some sort of historic classification, so.
Yeah, I know they are work, I talked to Jenny at the ribbon cutting and she said they're working with them because they need to put interpretive signs there. Uh, and they're, you know, working with, uh, I think, you know, some of Bill John Drew and stuff and all that. So I, at least for that part, they're doing it, but I can bring that up to us with the other sites, so.
All right, Lori, no, Rich, Rich before Lori.
Hey, thank you. Uh, again, I kinda wanna circle back around. Um, I I don't, I don't feel any things, uh, I don't know. I I I wasn't angry about tonight's work session, I just really wanted to be clear, I was just sharing a perspective, so. Uh, as far as uh stuff to put out, I really don't have much. Uh, my apologies for not being able to be there tonight. Just things happen sometimes and I'm still at work, so thank you so much, though.
Appreciate it. Lori?
All right, uh, just a couple uh quick things. Uh, one, I participated in the police staffing study uh earlier this week and uh I thought the group that was doing that asked some fantastic questions. Uh, so I'm super excited to see what they come back with, uh, some more to come there. Um, let's see, I've got a meeting with uh city staff and then members of the Mountain Festival uh parade uh later on this week regarding a Winter Fest Parade. So I'll keep you guys uh posted uh in that regard as well. And then uh I've got a perks meeting next week, so that's all for me.
Perfect, thanks Lori. Chris?
I don't have much, I attended a planning commission meeting on Monday where they only have one agenda on the topic, which was the Sandy Community Campus um for variance and that went through.
How are they meeting? Are they all showing up or are they all doing video?
There's, there's, they're always, videos are always on now and um there's usually one or two on video and the rest are in person.
Oh, okay, so not all different than us.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 okay.
Majority are there. Um, and then thank you to the staff. I attended Sunday's uh opening or ribbon cutting. It was a good, a great event and one of the first ones I've been to as a city councillor, so um, thank you. And that's all, yeah.
All right, thank you. Uh, real quick for me as well, uh, it's been mentioned the volunteer appreciation was a great event.
Oh, yeah.
Um, and I feel like kind of more souped up than years past. And then we kinda did things with the uh coordination with the concerts in the park. This seemed kinda more focused and specific, more honored them, so thank you for that. Um, while there, and I know I mentioned this to a couple of people, I just, the worst part about getting me out of my house is when you stand there thinking and looking at things. And one of it is like, you know, that that's the stage area back there by the Disney boat really is a special spot uh that's underutilized. Um, and I just, and I know it will take a budget allocation from us, but we do music in the parks, we do movies in the park. I mean, we should bring some theater of some sort um to the park um in that area. I think it'd be really cool, especially on a nice spring or summer night, so just a thought. Um, and then Bell Street, three sixty-second, uh, that ribbon cutting was awesome. Uh, thank you for everyone who came out to that, past, present, staff, um, electeds um and family members of property, of the property owners and stuff out there. It's just gonna be such a huge deal for our community. Uh, everything from uh just access to Bluff Road and those schools, to development of those properties to, I know, um, Carol's talking about doing some kind of bike race that incorporates that road uh during some of the different parade planning that I don't think will end up working out, but there's a short, like, we could stage stuff on there. There's just, a project like that just allows more opportunities for us as we're figuring and troubleshooting things. So it's gonna be a great project. Thank you to everybody. Uh, I mean, it was, oh, in a queue like this, it's all hands on deck to get something, a project like that done. So thank you to everybody who was part of that. Uh, with that, I'll adjourn, thanks.